So the first question we have here is where are most of the timber logs being sold to? Does either Congressman or Senator have any information on that? Yep, that's all I have.
The mill is completely flooded with fire-kill timber from the recent fires. I think SBI has completely obligated the central process, their own timber. So there is no market. We killed the market, we killed the timber. Like I said, the reduction in timber harvests off federal lands and the number of sawmills that are able to process this timber dropped by five-fold. The good news is that if they are, if we can guarantee a stateless free of excess timber coming off of federal lands for at least 20 years, those mills will return in March and we kill the market.
Senator?
I agree, we are in a pretty dire situation. So our biggest lumber producer is Sierra Pacific. And so I did meet with them early on. They're committed to continue to stay at District 4, continue to assist us. They need help with the overregulation in state, so I've been addressing that threat head-on. The other thing that I'm working on is bringing back biomass into Settah District 4. A lot of our communities go across the borders to Nevada with their biomass. We want to keep those jobs and those bills and businesses here. We have, you know, we have the need, we just need to make sure that we can pacify the environmentalist so that they can let us do the work we do.
Okay, next question here is, are any of the timber going overseas or are we keeping it in the U.S.? And a comment, we seem to see a lot of the truckloads going to the Sacramento Harbor.
I don't know about the export situation. I do know this, United States is the second largest importer of software lumber next to China. And you look at the enormous resources that we have and then consider what it means that we're the second biggest importer of lumber in the world behind China. Again, we've done this to ourselves.
So this next question, and I think just the answers with everyone sitting up here and talking is pretty clear, but I said we would read all the questions. It says, "Do each of you commit to putting politics aside and work for us on this life or death issue?" And I don't want to speak for them, but I think the answer is pretty clear, so.
I just wanted to say one thing. I know we have this at the federal level, but here at the state level, we have a very active problem solvers caucus. It is a bipartisan, bicameral group of legislators. And we have made that commitment to one another to put politics aside and really do what's right for California, regardless of whether it is a district bill or a California-wide bill. So you're going to start to see some really great things happen from there. Just recently, we were able to protect the $290 million of floodplain money that the governor had taken out of the budget. We were able to restore that, and that was through the problem solvers caucus moving forward. So we're looking to model what's being done at the local level and ensure that we're bringing every voice to the table so that we all walk away a little bit happy and a little bit sad, but that ultimately that California gets what it needs to be for.
Well, I will say, on the categorical exclusion we got for Tahoe in 2016, one of our strongest allies and advocates in the Senate, Diane Feinstein, she had enormous opposition from the left wing of her party. That's why we had to narrow it down to just the Tahoe basin. But without her leadership in the Senate, I don't think we even gotten through. And we were able to get it into the WIN Act of 2016, it was signed by Barack Obama. So there is hope for bipartisan census oppositions. But we also have to recognize that there is a philosophy out there that is possible in any kind of active management of our forest lands. They promised us 50 years ago that this legislation that they passed, the National Environmental Policy Act, the Dangerous Species Act, and the related acts would improve our forest environment. And I think now, after 50 years of experience with these laws, we're tunneling the ask, how is the forest environment doing? The answer is death, and it has been catastrophic. And when a law or a series of laws not only fails to achieve their objective, it is actually counterproductive to their objective, I think we are all entitled to reexamine the issue and to enact the reforms that are necessary to restore our forests to the health and resiliency and fire resistance if we want to support a brand new generation.
This next question, I believe, is directed to Congressman McLean. What can you do to get BLM and US, United States Forest Service to maintain their roads for emergency access and held to the same standards that private landowners are? BLM and county are not mandated and accessible for emergencies.
Well, this answer is right. In fact, when I was at the King Fire, the day that it exploded out of control, I was at the command center that day, the firefighters there were residing themselves. That fire was heading toward the Georgetown Forest Hill, and they were very close to downtown, just the way the loss of Grizzly Flats last year. And one of the firefighters, one of the senior firefighters, came up and he threw tears in his eyes. He says, "Congressman, I can't even get to this fire on the ground. We used to have good timber roads, I could get equipment there." He says, "All I can do right now is drop stuff into the air and pray to God the wind shifts." And the wind didn't shift, and we did not lose those towns, but we came very, very close for rat of roads. And this is the thing that I find so frustrating. About half of our forests are privately owned, the other half are publicly owned, mainly by the federal government. I toured this scarred King Fire five years later, so this was now about five or six years ago. You literally tell the boundary line between SBI's properties and the federal property just by the condition on both sides. Five years after the fire, SBI had salvaged all of the timber when it still had value. They sold it, they used that money to replant, you had now young, growing, thriving trees on their side, a young, thriving forest. On the public line, you could literally see the boundary line. The dead trees were still standing, you don't want to remove them, the whole area was abandoned. Rush gets first plane on that fire scarred land. So now you have about six feet of brush grown up, and these big trees started to fall on top of it. The private lands, all are served by good forest roads, public lands, we've abandoned. And this is this let the nature take care of things mentality that we see with federal land managers today, where we're losing our timber roads. You know, our old timber, one told me that he was working on logging crews, and he says, "We had good timber roads throughout the national forests. When if we were working one ridge and we saw a fire start on another ridge, it was no trouble, put a bulldozer on a truck, take it over to the other ridge, put the fire out, and come back and resume work." But we allowed that to toll the terrorists. Until we bring back the system that we have, where Forest Service forests would mark off surplus timber, we auction off the logging companies, and when we maintain good timber roads to facilitate that process, until we get back to that, whether we continue to see the scourge that we're now suffering, it's not complicated. This is not an act of God, this is an act of public policy.
The next question is for Senator El Dorado Gill. Could you please explain what the $49 million grant is going to be used for in El Dorado County? That's all I have.
$40 million grant, what is that?
I read about it in the paper, and there's a grant for wild fire prevention that, your name was in it, so I have to...
Yeah, we have a District Wide Grant that is all set at District 4, and it is for forest health, for replanting in our forests, but that's going to go across. I'm trying to think how much is coming to El Dorado, I don't know off the top of my head. My district director is here. Lauren, how much is it just El Dorado?
Close to $7 million in the Tahoe area.
In the Tahoe area, yeah. So it's for replanting, essentially, we have the burn scars, as you probably seen over and over again, so we can bring health and revitalization back to our forests. Because what we're seeing is with every extreme weather pattern, we're getting more and more mudslides flooding in avalanches, more than we've ever seen. And, you know, the other thing for us is we want to make sure that we are ensuring that all the water that is coming down, that we can actually recharge our underground aquifers, because the water's coming, we just don't have anywhere to put it, fortunately, right now. I am also excited that we finally got in print from our governor saying that he is willing to relax some of those sequel guidelines to ensure that our roads, our dams, and our infrastructure is, we can start to invest in bills. So that is really exciting for me, because I think that that's something that's going to help us bring into the next move for the entire forest.
Okay, thank you. Next question is for Mary Beth. So water tanks at 2,500 gallons are created to supply fire equipment. Can some credit be given for installation and such a system by the insurers?
As far as different actions that you can take. But that doesn't preclude insurance companies for to give you additional discounts for what you have done, which you have to ask, okay? It's just not in the regulation.
All right, this question is for both Congressman and Senator. Question, thank you both, or yeah, thank you both for your help with the emergency and continued recovery up in our district as declining with, and from the mosquito fire. What can you do at the federal and state level to help with small community districts receiving funding for recovery?
Well, receiving funding for recovery means we probably have. One of the great frustrations in the, this wasn't the Cal州火, but when we had the Creek Fire in the Fresno area, FEMA refused to provide individual assistance to homeowners because it didn't meet their specific formula. Trump was president at the time, one call to Trump, he immediately reversed that, and we got the individual assistance for all the victims of the Creek Fire. President Biden actually flew out during the Cal州火, made a personal appearance here in this county, promised that the federal government would have the backs of all of the people affected by this fire, flew out again. FEMA refused individual assistance to the victims of the Cal州火, even though the destruction was greater than that on the Camp Fire that destroyed Paradise. And we have not yet been able to get the president to respond to many, many inquiries of why he has not reversed that FEMA order. It's entirely within his authority, it took one phone call to Donald Trump to get it done. We can't even get through to the president to get this done, it's been close to two years now.
The biggest thing that we can do to support community service districts is to show up. So I have over 1,000 small districts or special districts in Settah District 4, but my team is thriving, we're strong, and when you call us, we will show up. You know, I give a lot of credit to Supervisor Turbu, who reached out very early on and set up a visit to Grizzly Flats, and having conversations, seeing firsthand water tanks being held together with duct tape, seeing just that where a community used to thrive has now been leveled. There's no school, there's no U.S. post office, no church, no corner store, but the heart and soul of the community, the people, the families, many of them are still there. And so having conversations with them around the Camp Fire as they recall the firefighters trying to help them take their animals and their family and their belongings out, this is two years after the Cal州火. So showing up is number one. Two is hearing the stories, because if we don't live it, then how do we know what their experiences are? So that's what my team did in partnership with Supervisor Turbu and his staff, and we put forward a budget request to offset the gap, the funding gap, for the community service district there in Grizzly Flats. I know that that's not enough, we need to do more, we need to ensure that there is housing for all of those that have been displaced. If we can do hotel vouchers for the homeless here in California and let them stay at some of the most, you know, beautiful hotels, you know, that you and I have to pay over $200 to stay at, we can afford as a state to provide housing for a community that's been devastated by a fire. So again, I know maybe I'm a few, this hits home. This hits home because I know all of us know somebody that was impacted, not ourselves, from the Cal州火. And over and over again, the question is, why is the state and the federal government not working together in conjunction to make sure that we are not only making it safe for firefighters, but we are communicating as one entity to ensure that we're all on a safe page when we see a threat of fire? There should be no reason that we sit there and watch a devastating fire cross the ridge and threaten so many homes in our valley. So for me, bringing that forward, absolutely support letters for funding, number one. We get asked all the time as legislators, what's your top priority for funding? And Grizzly Flats, my priority for funding.
Share this with the community, that some work that he was in the vaccine, or the backside.
He pushed it. He pushed it. He sponsored it.
Pushing forward with microsystems to reform an efficiency fire act and to get that through. So there's a lot of work that our officials are doing, whether it's out in front or pushing from behind and making it happen, so it's a pleasure, thank you.
I'll just add one more thing. So in 912 counties, 11 counties were impacted from Christmas Day through just last month with extreme weather. 11 of them received assistance from FEMA and from the federal government. We are very fortunate with that. The other portion of our responsibility as public service servants is to partner with Cal OBS and the Cal Fire. So visiting them, ensuring that they're staffed, ensuring that they have resources, ensuring that the facility that they're assigned is, has everything that they need. You know, I went up and down the 49 chain and just can't say how much appreciation and honor I have for our Cal Fire and Cal OBS. They just did an amazing job. And the other piece to that is just really our fairgrounds, our county fairgrounds, because those are the sites for emergency evacuations for our animals. And so one other bill that I have is to ensure that we have, we can keep our funding for our fairgrounds at the local level, and I'm happy to say that that's been widely supported at the legislature, so it all comes together in terms of what we can do.
Sure, well, I got to ask, so how does the Office of Emergency Services coordinate with other counties, much like with the mosquito fire, when you have two counties with an incident occurring?
Yeah, when we have a large scale incident, we send out, our OES sends out a message to Cal OBS, what we need to have as far as resources to come in and do whatever it is that we need to be doing, whether it's evacuations, whether it's providing security. So as I said, like during the mosquito fire or Cal州火, the area was so big, we, at times, we were deploying over 100 officers during the day to go in and patrol these areas because they were so big. So that's one of the ways we send messages to Cal OBS and make this work.
Thank you. So this one's for Mary Beth. How will the insurance companies be informed of all, I'm relying, the defensible space work being done by all of the fire agencies, BLM, Forests, et cetera? And how can you guys advocate for that?
Okay, say that again? How will we go to local?
Well, so this question came up in one of our monthly Fire Safety Council meetings. It's along the lines of, so when work is done, so for instance, on BLM land here, that is a state responsibility area, defensible space has been done around that, providing protection on the government lands. And so the question, they're wanting to know, how can that be, how can it be ensured that that is brought into helping with managing or taking into consideration fire risk areas?
Well, I'm sure that the BLM land also has to be insured as well, and so the regulations will work the same way. And I have, right? Good question. I mean, it's the California land, whether it's legal or not, they need insurance, and they need to be insured.
One of the things that we haven't talked about today, which is pretty impactful, is that it's not only our homes that are suffering from loss of insurance, it's our firehouses, it's our businesses, it's our farms, it's our schools. Our special districts are seeing not only their insurance rates, you know, quadruple, I mean, but to a point where it's not, we're not able to meet the budget. And I was just made aware that even here in Counterpart, we had to close a fire station, and that simply cannot happen. This is a drastic hit, a hit rock bottom, right? We are at rock bottom right now with funding for our public services. So there has to be a turn, and by coming here today, by bringing your voices, showing up when there's votes on the floor, you know, at the local level, supporting officials that understand these concepts, that is how we're going to turn around here in El Dorado.
Okay, Congressman Lindtak, this person is looking for some clarity on the status of your bills, and what are the chances in your thinking of passing, and I think that's going to get against the presidential signature?
Well, the Save Our Forests Bill, the principal co-sponsor of this carried by Kevin McCarthy, that was marked up last week in the House Natural Resources, plenty of times earlier before. The two bills that I had described to you, the Approving Forest Management Act, which takes the categorical exclusion, we have the Tahoe basin, it's been so successful, we will apply it to all federal lands. That will be heard this Tuesday in the Subcommittee on Federal Lands, the House Natural Resources Committee. The same day, we'll hear the 10 a.m. rule bill that I described. I expect that both of those will be scheduled for markup within the next month or so, and as I said, I expect to have them off the House floor by the end of the summer, or through the Senate, and I would hope, given the bipartisan support for the initial categorical exclusion and the fact that it has now worked so dramatically, and by the way, one of the great cheerleaders of that act was the region five Forest Service Supervisor, Randy Moore. He has since become the chief of the Forest Service under the Biden administration, which means he'll be a chair later within that administration, who can describe in great detail how successful that program is. So I am very optimistic that we've got a pretty good shot at getting that through in the session, the 10 a.m. rule bill. It's going to be a little tougher because you have this environmental list match where that you just have to leave your forests to burn, that's nature's way of cleaning them up. And again, if you're not going to take the excess timber out by logging, it's going to burn out, there's just no question about that. So, you know, they're right, if they're successful in shutting down logging, and they've been very successful in doing that over the years, we're going to have to let the forest burn in the future. I don't think that's acceptable with most people. Again, it takes a century for these forests to regrow, and the economic devastation that has caused, it's just enormous. So I'm hoping that at some point in the near future, common sense will reassert itself, and we'll start putting out fires again when they're tiny so that they don't become massive complications. And by the way, I can also say this, I think just the fact that we've introduced that bill, and again, I do think we'll get it through the House, if we're able to do that, that puts enormous pressure on the Forest Service and the other federal land managers not to continue this let burn policy. After the Tamarack Fire, and I introduced this bill in the last session, the Forest Service announced a moratoria on let burn orders, and many more than the supervisor for the district specifically ordered Forest Service until further notice to immediately attack all fires when they're spotted. And I don't believe that order's yet been rescinded, so that's pretty good. So we'll give you pressure on the Forest Service in that matter, and I do think that categorical exclusion is proving itself, and is going to become one over the next few years.
I just want to add that I couldn't agree with Congressman Lindtak more. Hopefully by October, we'll have our new helicopter, and it's going to come with a bandy bucket, so we will put Warren on fire when we see a fire. We're happy to send one.
And the 10 a.m. rule specifically says that every Forest Manager, if Sheriff Lightoff wants to put out that fire, you've got to let, even if it's on federal land. One of the great frustrating things, we are starting, and local fire departments respond to fires, they find out they're on federal lands, and often the land manager's saying, "No, that's a let burn, get off the federal land, you have no jurisdiction." In the case of one of the fires, the Woodford Fire about 15 years ago, the fire crew was threatened with arrest if they tried to put out the fire, you remember that? This is just sheer lunacy. So one of the things to go is, if a local fire department wants to put out the fire, you've got to let them put out the fire. And one of the other frustrating things is, you know, the Forest Service goes home at sunset, they won't fight fires at night. Anyway, I'm sorry, I don't mean to share 15 years of pent up frustrations, give all of your time, but this is just lunacy, and it's got to stop. The other thing is, we are working right now, we've got a meeting, I think next week, with the Forest Service, we're trying to amend the reimbursement process. Right now, if a local fire department goes out and puts out a fire on a federal land and puts it out right away, they don't get reimbursed for that crew, for that time, for that equipment. The fire has to go on for a number of days before they get reimbursement, so there's this disincentive for local departments to actually attack these fires immediately, and we're trying to get the immediate reimbursement. In fact, I believe the top priority needs to be given is the smallest fires so they don't become the worst.
The next question here was, tell us more about fire risk reduction communities, AKA firewise. So Gina Posey talked about that earlier, and she has a booth out there. I will, she, I think, has got, she's really knowledgeable on it. I thought a community I was with did it pretty fast, well, she did it by a week, she got it done in like three weeks. So talk with Gina Posey, she knows it, and she will give you all the material to help get you in the right direction.
I'm just going to ask, we have just opened up our local office in the town center, close to Congressman Lindtak's office, and our staff is there also to help with any issues with insurance, any fireways, community questions. We have resources there that the fireways chiefs have shared with us, so that's a central location as well.
So this question, I hope I get this right, there's a last but saying, what can we do to build more dams, in essence, increase our water supply? And I'm thinking that there's okay.
Yeah, because our governor is wasting a lot of our water.
Right, a lot of it is taken care of in the mountains and so forth, and getting more water, so where it feels like answering, go for it.
Well, I used to chair the Water Power Secretary of Natural Resources, I'll tell you what I learned, droughts are nature's fault, they happen. Water shortages is our fault, water shortages are decisions we made a generation ago, we stopped building reservoirs. We haven't built a major reservoir in the state since minimalists in 1979, meanwhile, the population has nearly doubled. We've now had in the past decade, two cycles of record drought followed by record rainfall. A drought when we were in danger of communities simply running out of water, we were under stress, and the amount of agricultural damage that was enormous. And then we have atmospheric rivers open up, and the same dams that have been drained near Dead Hole, I had to open up the floodgates because we've got no place to put that water. And these very same laws that prevent us from active forest management have also made this construction of new dams, endlessly time consuming, ultimately cost prohibitive. A little town forest hill for years, I think they A little town forest till for years, they didn't get their water from a sugar pine reservoir. It's a little dam that was constructed with an 18-foot spillway, but no spillway gate. They didn't need the actual water at the time, they do now, it's like 10 years ago now, 15 years ago. They tried to add a spillway gate, went out priced a million dollars for the spillway gate. That was a heavy lift for the little community, but within reach. But that wasn't the cost of the project. To the million dollars for the spillway gate, they had to add at least a million dollars of environmental reviews. They had to budget $2 million for environmental mitigations. And they had to pay the Forest Service a $6 million fee for the Forest Service to reroute a trail around that lake. So a little project that was about a million dollars became this multi-million dollar boom doll. And that's what's been holding up all of our dams. I introduced a bill several sessions ago to provide a one-stop shop for dam construction. Put one agency, Bureau of Regulation, in charge of all federal dam applications. They are responsible then for providing the environmental reviews concurrently rather than consecutively. That's one thing. Well, we've been studying raising the Shasta Dam since the vote in 1944, that'll be the semi idea. So in addition to having the studies done concurrently, it provides for a two-year limit on the time for studies. So we can get these projects approved within two years. That got through the House several sessions ago, failed in the Senate. We just amended that in my legislation I introduced. In order, we're putting it in a package that will be spearheaded by Daniel Valdejo. That is, I believe, that's already been marked up and is heading to the floor. So, but that's what's got to be done. It's the very same laws.
Build more.
Hey Tom, about the Alder Creek project that the county's working on. County Water Agency and a couple of other members.
Well, Alder Creek is such a project, but it's a fairly small project. I mean, you know, everybody thinks the Colorado's the great river in the west. You realize the Sacramento's bigger, much bigger. The difference is, we store, I believe, so 70 million acre feet on the Colorado, we store about 11 million acre feet on the Sacramento, we lose the rest of it to the ocean every year. This is just so. And it's not for lack of, no, they're worried right now, down the south end of the district, of massive flooding. The Friant Dam releases about 10,000 cubic feet per second before it begins the flood of the valley. They're expecting 40 to 60 days of between 20 and 30,000 cubic feet per second coming in. They're sitting on 3 million acre feet of water above. And they're expecting major flooding, particularly if there's a vast melt. Nobody would be worried about this if we had built the Temperance Flat Dam upriver from the Friant Dam. That would fill and refill the Lake Milton like five times. Auburn Dam here, had it been built, would fill and refill Folsom Lake, I believe, two and a half times. We wouldn't be worrying about any of this if we had just finished those projects. But again, the same laws and the same attitude that have blocked our ability to manage our lands have also blocked our ability to provide for water storage for the next generation. And we've done it to ourselves. That's my sole question.
Nashville Dam too, could have been built in the late 40s and early 50s, if it was never done too, because of regulations too.
Well, you remember, I said we store 11 million acre feet on the entire Sacramento system. Just Shasta Lake, that dam was built in 1944. It was built to 600 feet of elevation, but it's designed to be 800 feet. They didn't, again, once again, they didn't need the water at the time, they wanted for the next generation to build that final 200 feet of the dam in the future. We never did. Just completing that dam, Shasta, would add 9 million acre feet of water storage to the system, almost double the storage we have. And that's not building a new dam, that's simply completing one we started back in the 1900s. Once again, these are choices that we have made. And the good news is, we can make different choices whenever we want to, and maybe it's time we want it.
The next question, and I think you're getting on of this question, but this has become clear. Why aren't we expected to pay more for services, but yet we get less?
Because the, let me rephrase that question slightly. We used to make money managing our forests. Those federal timber auctions, 25% of them go right into communities like Cameron Park. Yet 75% went back into the forests. You'll hear all the time, because I ask Forest Service, why isn't, if anything, well, we just don't have the money. We just don't have the money. Wait a second. Half of our forests are owned privately, and those private owners keep their forests in resilient, healthy condition, and they make a lot of money doing it. So why is it that they're making money managing their forests well, and you're losing money managing our forests poorly? And again, it comes right down to the simple fact, they're bound by these idiotic laws, the private landowners are not. And so the private lands throughout the Sierra are healthy, resilient, fire resistant, and are producing money for the owners. And the public lands are in decrepit condition. We've got four times the timber density that the land can support within the Sierra Nevada, and it's burning. And once again, I'm sorry, it's coming down to this, we've done it to ourselves with really bad policies and bad decisions.
Respectfully disagree with the Congressman on just one point. We have a vast amount of private land that is owned by non-Californians. People that invest in our forest communities here, particularly in our district, that, you know, don't ever come to care for it. And it's adjacent to private land of residents that are here every day, living, working, and playing in the community. And so this has been an issue where your land comes up against either federal or state land, but other private lands that have acres to acres, and we have no way in the state to force them or incentivize them to clear their lands. Because again, fire is not discriminated from one property owned to another. So that is one of the issues here in California that we need to address as well.
Yeah, I guess it depends upon the landlord, but the private forests that are managed in a sustainable manner are producing enormous revenues for the property owners because they maintain them. They make money keeping their lands in excellent condition. And I'll tell you this, the most decrepit and dangerous lands that I've seen in the interface have been federally managed lands, the BLM in particular, but Forest Service as well. Most of these fires are starting and exploding on basically abandoned federal lands. And that's our fault.
Okay, the next question is actually directly towards CalFire. And it's, are there any recommendations in town to replace wood fences and still have privacy?
Yeah, so good question. There are alternatives. Metal fencing is a really good alternative, it's non-combustible, however, it limits privacy. There's other options, concrete center docked walls, and then also there's non-combustible alternatives to like wood fencing. It's a little more expensive, but again, it's made out of like concrete based material, and you can have those in place, they look like wood. But that would be our recommendation for alternatives to wood fencing.
Another question here is, can you explain how a structured fire is bought versus an open space fire? What do you need to do when you have it?
Yeah, so good evening, everybody. My name is Dustin Martin, Assistant Chief with CalFire. So a structured fire is, you know, it's predominantly contained to that structure. So we have our structural resources, our local partners that will respond into that and will make the proper attack, really confined to that single box. And we talk about open space fires, that's where we get a lot more challenges, just due to the vast nature of the land, access issues, being able to get in, depending on the terrain, the different type of resources that we need. So it is much different in that aspect. But those two fly together very well. Just because we have an open space fire doesn't mean it's not going to go into a structural fire. Our equipment for each type of fire is different. You'll see our coach that'll have the yellow Nomex on typically for a wildland fire, and then for a structural fire, much more protective equipment due to the increased heat, the carcinogens, the smoke, and that, so we have our SDVAs, those things. Really kind of different, but we have to be able to intermix it between both, because our fires don't decide that it's just going to be an open space fire or just be a structural fire. Our out is a structural fire, and then we go into our wildland, and then we have to pivot very quickly to contain that and contain both. So hopefully that answers the question.
Okay, so the next one is specific to Cameron Meadows' proposed development in the Rastus Pond in a high fire risk area. In and out of development, very restrictive and evacuation concerns, emergency vehicles would be blocked. How can the site be approved as proposed?
Well, the environmental impact report is a big factor for the development of something in that Rastus Pond area, Rastus Pond. And there is a new study being conducted, which will look at the water flow, the flood, how the flooding will occur. What we discovered with that New Year's Day flood is that the water ran which quickly on the lake and the developed areas that bear land. So it would be, that's going to probably hold up the development, I would assume, I'm not an expert on this, but the environmental impact, we'll have to look at that flooding aspect of Rastus and development. I did learn that water runs 10 times faster on asphalt than it is on bare land. So that will be a factor in, there were many, many homes that were affected by flooding with that New Year's Day flood. But the process is planning department, and then board supervisors. It does potentially come to Cameron Park because it's in our sphere of influence. The developer would probably want us to be that Rastus Development, whatever that is, to become part of Cameron Park. And then people would have the opportunity to give in to that process, if the committees amend the CSD Board. And people have the opportunity to present their point of view in favor or against that development. So it's a long process. It's still in the middle of the development, but I think the environmental reports are going to be a big factor, whether, how densely that's going to be approved or not. Many times those things are negotiated with the developer, maybe a lesser developer. I know there's ideas about trails and things like that.
Yeah, I believe the question also talked about access in wildfire. So Luke, if you wanted to talk, in those areas, during the application process of the fire departments, and CalFire will review those subdivisions to ensure that there's multiple points of access and egress, make sure the road width is proper, they're wide enough for fire apparatus to get in and out, make sure the fire hydrants are spaced properly to conduct fire suppression efforts, and also have wildfire safety plans that address those open spaces within those subdivisions. That's part of the planning process. The fire departments are heavily engaged in that, in that approval process, making sure to check current regulations, fire code, other counties. So Luke, if you had anything else you want to add to that? I get it? All right.
Three more for firefighters. Who's the biggest contributor of starting fires? People, nature?
Yeah, so our number one cause of fires is humans. That is the number one cause. As we look across Elrod County on a yearly basis, we look at our ignition sources, and most of the fires, the vast amounts, is human cause. May that be, maybe burning, campfires, maybe dragging a chain while someone's throwing a boat, Cadillac converters, and have, but they all step back to the human cause, even though they may be started by a vehicle, it does come back to human cause, and that is our highest cause of fires occasionally across the county.
Yeah, so the next question that came in is, can we fight fires during the night, and do we have the equipment? Absolutely, we fight fires at night. Typically, our fires will typically die down in the nighttime hours. The temperature goes down, the humidity's come up, and it's a great opportunity for us to seize that. But that's also dependent on our current wind conditions, our environmental conditions, and then we also have to take into account the terrain that we're in. At night, it is a much riskier operation if we're in really steep rugged terrain. So we have to evaluate that. We do have that flying aircraft now, you're seeing it quite a bit across the state, to assist us with that, via the intel ships, via the nighttime air attack, the nighttime water dropping helicopters that we are, that we're using, both across all of our wildland fire agencies. So yes, we have that ability, and we do attack fires at night. We don't unstaff our fires at the nighttime hours. We continue to have folks out there that work on 24-hour shifts. So yes, we will fight fire during the night, and we have people. Forest Service still has folks that they work a night shift.
Do they?
Yes, sir.
And the last question is, are inmates still involved in helping with the firefighting?
Yes, so we still have inmate firefighters. Our population has decreased over the years due to new regulations, but here in Elrod County, we have four hours per camp. They currently have three inmate crews staffed daily, and we're looking at possibly going up to five total here sometime this year. And so we still do use our inmates. That great program, great workforce, they do a lot of work, not only on fires, but also in the downtime, with working within the communities and clearing crops and doing projects for our sponsors. They work for Department of Transportation, they work for the county, they work for Cameron Park, and they're a great resource. And as our population, our inmates have dropped down, we have pivoted, and now we have firefighter hand crews that are staffed up. We have partnership with California Conservation Corps that are providing support members to be firefighters on hand crews. And we also have a partnership with California National Guard. So up and down the state, we have National Guard hand crews that are out fighting fires. So even though our population went down, we're still looking at other opportunities to continue to bring that good work up firing.
And I'll just make a comment, CalFire brought to, when we were clearing the, well, they did after we initiated the program of Pine Hill Preserve, significantly, if I recall, the inmate firefighter crews were the ones doing a significant amount of work back there, and did actually did a job with Chief Flackoff's leadership, your leadership and so forth. So thank you. Okay, so it's, well, Keith, hold on, I think we got one more. It's been four years since clearing of the preserve, and now it appears to be getting overgrown. What are the future plans? And I'll tip that off, I have heard, I've been told they're going to be taking it to 200 feet, and there's been some burning going on already, but I'll let you know.
And we need a road egress.
And we need a road egress.
Yeah, so we're continuing to work with our partners on the Pine Hill Preserve. We've got our BLM partners that are here today in the back, and we just did about 10 acres of burning out on the preserve, on the Pine Hill Preserve, with them in piles to clear a bunch of the stuff that our crews had gone in and cut. And so we did have a grant that did a bunch of the work, and we're not letting those opportunities go away. We're going to continue to keep up the defensive space there, continue to work with that, and we continue to work with our BLM partners to make sure that work gets done on a constant basis. So all that work that did go into it to give it to us, we're continuing to look at opportunities. Since in the last month, we did about 10 acres of burning out there, cleaning up a bunch of piles, and so that project is going to continue and continue to continue.
I'd like to say a special thank you for these four for speaking. The other speakers, thank you very much. This is a community effort, and fire does not care about politics, and when it comes down to it, it's us doing the work to get it done. Don't depend on someone else to do it for you. The Fire Safety Council is here to help you, to give you the tools so that you can do it yourself. I'm a stickler moment, if you want to do it yourself. I don't depend on government for, I try not to depend on government for as little as I can. I don't take care of myself. I can, I don't take care of myself, that's my personal belief. Also, I'd like to say, please stop, I hope they still have the system up so that you can sign a parade on the way out, it's a great tool, I've got it on my phone, and it's wonderful, get information, alerts, and you can count on it as being accurate. So again, thank you all for your time, the Fire Safety Council meets monthly, and we would like to see you there, we'd like to give you some information and help you to help yourself. So again, thank you, everyone.